Let me recording.
Folks, if you just want to make sure that you mute your mics when you're not speaking, cell phones off, you'll get dirty in just a minute. Uh, who joined us by phone?
That's Sue Robat.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Hey, Kristen.
Hey, Harold, how are you?
Good, life is good. It all looks like we're in the, in the shadows.
I know. Well, if I turn the light on above me, it's too much.
Yeah. Hey, Kelly.
Hey, good evening.
See, she's got the perfect balance of light. So does Vern.
Hey, let's call the Bean to order. Will you please join me in the pledge to flag?
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good flag, Vern. Way to bring the flag.
Good evening, everyone. Motion to approve Board of Education Minutes dated April 6, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Hey, I'll poll all members for yea or nay. Sue?
Yay.
Harold?
Yay.
Kelly?
Yay.
Vern?
Yay.
Steve? Kristen?
Yay.
And I'm a yay as well. It's unanimous. And a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting dated April 22, 2020 is printed.
Motion to approve is printed.
A second.
And I'll poll the members. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yeah.
Steve? Kristen?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a yes as well. That's unanimous. This evening, we have budget presentation, sure.
Just if I can ask the district clerk to verify there was no public comment that we received the email, Lori. Thank you.
This evening, we have one budget presentation. Mr. DiPazio, Jason, you have any other introduction?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to go over the 2021 budget proposal. The, um, the requirements for the board to complete this evening, the first is, well, they actually, the first would be the approval of the budget. It's number two on here. Need to select the tax levy scenario. There are three of them per tax levy, which will lead me to the first bullet. Once that has been decided and the budget's approved, then we will go into the tax report card. One of the three scenarios has to be submitted to ACDA. Okay? First is the major budget updates. This is the final draft. We've gone through a number of iterations of the budget for 2021, including what has most recently been COVID-19 and the impacts, potential impacts that that has done. It is a balanced budget. The adjusted revenue and expenditures due to COVID-19, as I was saying, there are a number of assumptions that have changed over time this year, and it'll be shown on the next few slides. The proposed budget, budget, budget increase, I'd like to look at it without, first, without the death service because the death service increase is offset by increased billing aid. So the budget year to year without the death service prior to the death service is 1.8% increase or $257,000. With, including the death service, which is the 15 years to start repaying the money that was used for the capital project, offset, totally offset by New York State, the increase would be 3.7% or $526,000. And last, there is, we also represent the library. It's a separate entity, but it is part of the voting for the district. In the library's tax levy, they're looking to increase it to $108,873. It was approved by the library board. The increase is $5,123 year-over-year. It's a 4.9% increase, and therefore then it exceeds the tax cap allowed. There will need to be a super majority for that to pass. Projections, excuse me, the projections for the current budget assumption scenario. What I'm referring to here on this slide is the discussion that we will have relative to the tax cap and also the tax levy, which every 1% increase in the tax levy would lead to about $43,500 increase to revenue. And I would like to note that without, without this increase of tax levy, what every, the 1%, every 1% is $43.5,000, we will need to use more fund balance if we don't get some of the money from the tax levy. We'll also have year-over-year adding to the, um, to the levy because once you put it in, we can always take it back down. But next year, if we assume a zero levy, it will still include this year's rate. Having significant reductions in the tax rate over the last number of years, there is a chart that shows, and I don't think I've included in this presentation, but earlier presentations, over the last 12 years, it has shown a significant reduce, reduction year-over-year relative to our tax levy. And then we're looking at a possible new normal with reduction in sales tax and other revenues to New York State. It's going to be increasingly difficult for New York State to continue to fund the schools as they have in the past. That's at least, that's one thought, so. I'm going to move to one of the three scenarios, and this is where the discussion will be. Scenario number zero, I'm calling it, would be a 0% tax levy increase. Just to show that next slide would be a scenario one for the tax levy increase. That would be a 1%. And scenario number two, which would be a 2% tax levy increase. And you would be able to see the implications. The significance here, I'll go back to zero. The significance here would be an increased need for appropriated fund balance. You could see that the number of the appropriated fund balance at around $743,000. With scenario number one, which is a 1% increase in the tax levy, we would not need to use as much appropriated fund balance. It would be $700,000. And scenario number two, which would be a 2% increase to the tax levy, would cause the fund balance appropriate, appropriated fund balance to be $656,000. Why this is significant is because this is the highest we've had the need to put appropriate fund balance over the last number of years. This is to offset the reduction in foundation aid that New York State has already communicated to the school districts with the potential that foundation aid might still reduce over, over time this year. So to that, you could see the documentation for all three. I, I would like to open up to discussion with the board if at this point we can come to a conclusion of one of these three scenarios for the tax levy.
Before I do that, one point I want to make that Joe had mentioned. As of last Friday, I have some good news and then some not so good news. We have received information that we are not expecting state aid cuts at this time. We are, the state is expecting federal help to be passed with the CARES Act. However, we have been told there is a good possibility of mid-year cuts, either in July or through the end of the calendar year. They're calling these measurement periods. So there is a chance, I would say a pretty good chance, there's going to be some mid-year cutbacks on state aid. So we received somewhat good news Friday afternoon. We were expecting May 15 was the drop dead date. That's why this meeting was pushed up until May 18. Now we're waiting to see what's going to happen. I think it's about mid-July when the next measurement period is. We expect to hear something. So just keep that in mind as you have the conversations on the three scenarios that Joe and I have shared with you. Thank you.
So would any member like to open up a discussion on these three scenarios?
I think at this point, you could, at least in my opinion, take the 0% off the table. It's just not realistic to think that we can't increase it. It's toss up between the 1 and the 2%. I think if you went with the 2%, we can always decrease it in future years. I have a feeling the governor is going to step in at some point and reduce what they're going to give us even more. We've gotten some indication at my, with my agency, that that's what's going to happen. Um, I mean, I don't know. It, it's a crapshoot either way. If you increase it and we don't need it, we can reduce it next year, but I have a feeling we're going to need this, we're going to need to increase it.
I think that 2% is the way to go, only because we've given back three or four other years we can give back if it turns out that we don't need it, but we have to go up in small incrementation so that our tax-based people who don't have a large ability, if we went 4% next year or 3.5%, that if we got them for 2% this year, and next year we had to do another 2%, depending on where this all goes. So I think it would be best to go with the 2%. That way the people can adjust to it and not have to worry about next year being more.
The other piece I would say, just as a matter of record, whether we do 0, 1, or 2, we are below the tax cap. Our tax levy cap is just about 3.5%. So we could go as high as 3.5%. That number is not, is not on the table. It's never been on the table. We're looking at 0, 1, or 2, but our tax levy limit is just around 3.5%.
Well, I do not believe we should exceed 2% at this time, and hopefully not in the future. So, I agree with Kristen and Harold on this. 2% makes the most sense to be responsible and, um, and to still keep the burden as low as possible. Mr. DiPazio, I think in the past, you kind of explained that back in 2012, each taxpayer was actually paying more than they are to, that they'll be paying with this 2% increase. Is that correct?
If you look back at 2012, and I don't have the slide in this presentation, but I have shown it over time. It literally shows a downward cycle in terms of the tax rate. But having said that, occasionally, the, uh, the assessment value does go up. But the tax rate and the assessment value total, the total amount of taxes paid. So the assessments have gone up a bit, but the tax rate has come down like a steep curve down each and every year for that last number of years. And therefore, the amount of tax burden on the individuals have come down to overall.
And we just had re-evaluation, so we won't be getting reevaluations for some time again, right?
Yeah, that's an area, I'm sorry, I don't know in the Lyndonville School District, how often they do the evaluations. I think it's every once every three years, but I think they rotated a bit depending on the different pieces in the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do want to point out something else on the, on these three scenarios. We have, uh, let me, let me jump to this page first. So we can see, um, since the COVID-19 and the communication of the reduction in foundation aid or holding flat foundation aid, I guess that's the way the state wants to call it. Typically, we would get 2% or 3% increase in foundation aid each and every year. We have mandatory raises per contract, and we have mandatory increases to healthcare, part of the benefits. It's every year. And for the state to, foundation aid to keep flat, what's a significant impact on the district to just try to stay balanced, to do a balanced budget. Therefore, this year, we looked at a large number of areas. Everything was on the table. The leadership team, the board, the leadership team, a number of others, we've, we looked at everything, and this slide shows that we've already implemented about a $285,000 reduction in spending just to get to this point. We looked at labor and benefits, and we found that there is a total of three retirees, two of which we're not replacing, they're inside our, our organization, and the third is the bus driver retiring, which we need to replace, but it'll be covered by an outsourced provider. In addition to that, we looked at our EPK, which is our new grant, the three-year-old section of EPK. We are now going to bring that back internally and offset and absorb the work that those current people are doing and bringing it back internally. EPK is a funded federal grant, and therefore then it's funded by the federal government, not part of the New York State or the tax requirements. In addition to that, we looked at reduced, reducing our budgeted subs. When you see the non-labor section, we are significantly reducing conferences and other things. So we need less subs, therefore less labor and benefits there. A reduction with the chair, chaperones, the extra hours. And also, we're looking at the boys' volleyball to reduce one modified boys' basketball, and they have no volleyball, boys' volleyball next year. The no ball, boys' volleyball was due to not very strong turnout. In the non-labor area, purchases, significant reduction in conferences, travel, mileage, supplies, equipment. We looked at everything. The main thing is, is we look at our own budgets, our own home budgets, we always look at needs versus wants, and we very much focus on needs.
The other piece I would mention too, that's, that did not make it up there yet, we have also reduced our after-school travel in terms of transportation. We used to offer a four-day-a-week, we call it twilight school, for our students who are suspended or who need extra help. That will still be available two days a week, and we have teachers here every day until 3:15. We will save costs there both on staffing and on transportation with running the students home at 4:30. So while we are reducing services to our students, we're not totally tossing those out either. We're just trying to minimize costs as much as possible. I've talked to the athletic director regarding chaperones at games, looking at those options. Travel will be not happening next year outside of our own region here. There will be no out-of-state travel, no across-state travel. Those pieces will be done for the time being, and we'll seek to do the training in-house. There are, there are some good opportunities out there that we're not going to be able to take advantage of, but I suspect the conference industry as a whole will likely be cutting back as well.
So taking a good, long look at our entire spending, we reduced as much as we could at this point, and that's where these three scenarios come into play with all the information associated with them and where all the revenue needs to come from in order to balance the budget. Discussion more on the, would it be 1 or 2%?
I think that just because tax rates are lower than they were 10 years ago or seven years ago, the tax levy from 10 years ago is actually up 20% from where it was at that time. So I disagree with that. I appreciate all of the cuts, the effort that got put into finding that money to cut back, but to request a tax increase at this time, I think is, is not something we should do. And I think if you're ever going to have any time to use reserves, I think this is the time you do it. I also think that we have to put together a longer-term plan to find a way to find another way to cut more money or maybe talk to Barker about merging more services because we are going to be in real trouble because I really believe that New York State's in deep trouble because New York City was a huge, huge tax revenue resource for the state. And they're in trouble, and they're going to be in trouble for a while. So that money's not coming back anytime soon. So I just think we need a longer-term plan, and I just, I am not comfortable raising taxes at all during this.
Let me chime in here a second. I think historically, the graphics will show that this board, uh, over the last decade or more, has been very responsive to the taxpayer and very mindful of the taxpayer. And it's very easy in times of increasing, I don't know the term, uh, assessment values in housing that have gone up, that have balanced to market value, which was a lot, large increase in assessment. At that point in time, the board, the easy thing to do is just to keep the tax levy from the, from the school district the same because you get more revenue. This board did not do that. They actually decreased tax rates to even that out to more mirror the spend, the actual spending that, that the school district incurs. Always being mindful of a little bit of extra for a rainy day, which is, in this budget is shown to be prudent. What scares me the most about the current scenario is how deep we're digging into the fund balance to balance this single-year budget. And if you combine that with the unknown of the potential for more, for more crawlback, for more pushback from the state mid-year and the real potential with the budget cuts that have already occurred in this budget, that we're going to start reaching staff, we're going to start reaching programs and, and, and more if budgets are, are pulled back from the state. And so I, I'm in favor of the the 2%, 2% increase at this point in time, and then we'll see where we go from there. If we're rosy again, I, I think this board will be mindful of the taxpayer and give it back if necessary.
Sue Robat here, I would just like to weigh in. I am hearing everything that everyone's saying. I also work for New York State, and I hear what Steve is saying. We are in a real pickle in New York State as a whole. And for the very reasons that Steve said, I think we should do the 2% X, or 2% increase in the taxes. We do need to have a long-term plan. We need to make more cuts, but I think using reserves at this time is irresponsible because we do not know what's coming down the line. We need to stay conservative, and historically, in all the years that I've been on this board, we have remained conservative, and we've made it through when other schools have had real big issues. We need to do small increments. We are still below the tax cap. There is a cost of living that comes naturally, and we can expect that as taxpayers, and I, I believe that people do. We need to offset this state aid, which could still be reduced. We just don't know. So I think going into our reserves right now is dangerous. We are just so, you know, things are just so unstable right now that I don't think it's too much to ask to have a 2% increase and see where we come out, and it's six months to another 12 months from now, and then pull back if we are able to next year, keeping in mind that we are going to continue to cut costs, look for ways to keep our projects lean. That's a program for New York State that we review everything we do from how much paper we buy, how much is recycled, how much, um, time is used to repeat bus routes. All kinds of little ways that we can cut back costs, even the little things will add up, and I think we need to continue to do that, but I think it's irresponsible again to go into the reserves, and I'm in favor of a 2% tax right now at this time.
The other thing I want to make sure we all understand, whether, whether we do one or two, and there's going to be more cuts, if there are more cuts in midsummer, that's not necessarily going, the tax levy increase, what, you know, we need it, is not necessarily going to protect more cuts in terms of labor, our staff. We have not made any recommendations now. We don't plan to. We've cut as much as we can from the non-labor side, and we have more recommendations from the team that we have yet to implement. We just received those last week. Those, if they, when they are implemented, will, will simply result in more fund balance next year. So to Steve and Sue's point, yes, one of the pieces of that plan is to have, you know, what are the, what are those additional reductions that would result in next year having additional fund balance?
Let me add one thing too, the order of magnitude. So if you own a house here in this district, and the house is assessed at $100,000, each 1% increase would be about $26 annually. So a 2% increase would be about $52,000, $52 if your house was assessed at $100,000. That's the order of magnitude with what we're talking about.
Good evening, Vern Vonda here. I think I'm the only person that has not chimed in yet. As far as looking at my own personal information and how I would have to decide with this, a 2% increase is about $6 a month. So if I have to put it into perspective like that, I support a 2% increase. I don't want to say it's a caveat in order for me to feel that way, but I want our board and our school to aggressively try to have school in September and do it as safely as possible, and I want that to be first and foremost on our plan that September comes out and we can get these kids back in school. So I would, I very much think a 2% raise on our tax levy is the right idea. I don't trust that New York is going to give us the amount they're saying for the entire year. And I think it's extremely important that we can get these students back into school, and I think that needs to be a top priority so that they get to get that experience. And I think that needs to be a top priority so that they get to get that experience back. I know that there's a strong push right now about more extended learning or remote learning. And it's extremely difficult on a lot of people. And I think six dollars a month for me is very worth it to have all those kids back in school and continue with all of the services that are currently available to them.
The other members like to chime in at all?
I'd just like to say that the, the problem with the way the system is set up is that they hamstring you. That you're being hamstrung by the state so that you, you gotta take baby steps to get the money. And if we don't take any big steps now, next year they're gonna hamstring it and you could be even in a worse position and your fund balance will be gone. So to me, it's, it's prudent to do this, the two percent now and take that baby step. Instead of next year, all of a sudden, like I said earlier, asking our taxpayers to come up who have limited resources to come up with more next year, a lot more next year. It's better to take the baby steps and they can find ways, corners to cut, just like we're doing. And hopefully the federal government's gonna come through and bail out at least the education system. I don't agree with bailing out the state, but the education system, it wasn't the education system's fault. So that's why I still support the two percent.
Just, there is a bill right now in the House, as we heard from our last meeting we had with the audit team. Your bill has not passed the Senate yet. It has passed the House, barely passed the House. But it passed the House. It does not have the support of President Trump. And we're not sure if it'll pass the Senate. But one of the bullet points in there is that they're looking at about ninety billion dollars in funding. States would have to commit to using that to maintain schools and colleges. So that has not yet been decided. And that's why, again, as of last Friday, New York State is holding off on making any cuts. And we are hopeful that the government, the federal government will come through. But again, that, that does not help us out in mid, in midsummer either.
There is another point too. I said it during these earlier board meetings relative to the budget. There are two thirds of the budget revenue approximately is associated with New York State's money, the foundation aid. One third approximately is associated with a tax levy.
What is the likelihood that if we get, if the states end up with a federal bailout of sorts, that they don't cut the state funding to schools even more? Cause I've seen that happen with part of some of the different county departments. They had, the federal government stepped in, up the money to certain departments and then the state has turned around and cut the same amount of aid. So really they're getting nothing.
Yeah, well, that's what happened to us back, you know, when the first bill was passed. The state called it pandemic, they called it a pandemic cut, pandemic expenditures or, there was a pandemic reduction. There was a pandemic reduction. You know, our district was just about two fifteen, two hundred fifteen thousand. That, as Kristen just said, was, was immediately supplanted with the federal money. So it was, it was washed and the, the thought is the same thing would happen again. I think, you know, that the, it would be one for one based on what happened last time with the pandemic reduction. And then it was offset by the, and that showed actually on the state aid report. We saw the cut, we saw the pandemic reduction cut, it showed up on our reports. And then we saw the federal, whatever it was called at that time, a federal cares act, I think it was called something else. The heroes act is a new one. Okay, federal cares act was a one back then that offset the pandemic reduction from the state. The newest one is called the heroes act that has not yet passed by the Senate. And again, there's no support for it right now at the White House. It will likely change as these bills often do before it gets finalized.
I don't think we can take any stock in receiving any of that federal money. I mean, I think we could take that right off the table, that we're not really gonna see any additional funding from that, even if it does pass the Senate.
Let me throw in right now, if there ends up being, this and, these numbers that I've put, just I've put up are consistent where we are right now with the New York State amount of money they're giving us. So if they end up offsetting monies like they did with this pandemic thing, then these numbers will hold true. They're significantly higher from the balance sheet or fund balance as you've ever seen before. But at least they'll hold true. One of the concerns is if the New York State decides to reduce even more funding, then these numbers won't hold true anymore. But nonetheless, the, the voting has to happen next, next month, June ninth. And we have to focus on what we know today. It keeps going. Yes. So the last component now, and then I need to get concurrents is when we're in on it. So the last couple of slides, this is the estimated expenditures for 2021. The way we always look at it, there's a format, a constant. You first look at general support, which is the non-instructional component for the most part. You know, the, the, some people might call it some overhead components. And that's about one point nine million. Let me get the number here just a moment. In two thousand twenty twenty one, it's about a one point eight percent increase, thirty two thousand dollars, one point eight, one point nine million. The instructional is always going to be and should always be the most significant part of the budget expenditure. That's all the teachers, all the components that are associated with the direct impact on the student. They're looking at the budget 2021 of about seven point five million dollars of, of our budget, a little bit over about half. It's about an eighty, ninety percent increase, one point two percent. When you look at transportation, transportation's slightly up about thirty six thousand dollars. When you look at employment benefits, that's the area I made reference to healthcare. This year went up relatively small and it's still a five percent increase year over year. The employee benefits component's up just short of a hundred thousand dollars or three point one percent. And it's a significant part of our budget as well. It's three point three million dollars next year. The debt service is what I made reference to earlier in my presentation. That's, we're going out for a new, what they call band, and then later then it will become a serial bond. And that is completely offset by the revenue increase that we'll receive from the New York State. As we're taking the band and later the bond, it's money that we are borrowing from the, from the street, as they say. So the New York State is required to make sure that we have enough funding to pay back the people that purchased the bonds. And then there's a very little bit within internal transfers. So the total is just under fourteen point seven million dollars. As I said before, that's the increase of five hundred twenty six thousand, which includes the, the debt service at three point seven percent overall. But without the debt service, it's about two hundred fifty seven thousand dollar increase or one point eight percent. There's another slide that I would like to comment on, this last one, the assumptions. A couple of additional assumptions Jason Smith has already mentioned about it. This assumes our current level that we know about from New York State Foundation Aid. It's also, the, the thought would be when July comes, that's the second major component. The New York State has identified three periods. The first has already come and gone. The next one will be by June thirtieth. And then the third one will be by December thirty first of 2020. That's when New York State will reassess the dollars that they have. They'll give funding to all the different components of New York State, including school districts. So we are paying attention to the mid-July or so. That would be the second of three New York communications. Again, as Jason Smith correctly pointed out, we're looking to the federal funding to aid the New York State. And then last is the leadership team has already begun. And I have Jason Smith, myself, the rest of the leadership team. We've looked at all kinds of areas and we have developed additional lists just in case. If, if the New York State funding is reduced because federal funding doesn't hit the mark, then we can easily, not easily, it would be difficult, but we would identify, have already identified additional reductions if needed. And then the, the last part of the presentation here is the voter propositions. The first will be this budget at fourteen point seven million dollars. There is one board seat and there are, my understanding is there's five currently, five different individuals for the one board seat, which will be a proposition and for voters to vote on. A third proposition is in regards to the transportation to purchase one new bus. We're replacing a bus that has a hundred sixty one thousand miles. It's a two thousand ton purchase. It's exceeded its useful life and we need to purchase that. That would be no impact in the taxes that we're talking about. That would be coming one hundred percent off our transportation reserve from 2016. That we've already put aside the money with anticipation of needing to purchase a new bus. And then last proposition would be the Yates Community Library. The process is with the community library that we also have that part of the communication to, for the voting on June ninth.
Speaking of June ninth, I want to just talk real quick about, since the vote this year is by absentee ballot only. Couple of things I want to point out to our board and to our taxpayers. This week you're going to be receiving a postcard in the mail that has a date of the, of the election, June ninth, 2020, by absentee ballot only. The budget hearing will be on June second at six P M via this live stream. And the card also has information as to what is a qualified voter and how the absentee ballot works. Following that postcard, the applegram, which is our annual update on the school budget, which, which we just got done talking about, that will be mailed sometime next week. And then the ballots will be sent out on Wednesday, May twenty seventh. And within each ballot, there'll be a self-addressed stamped envelope and two ballots. If people need more ballots, they need to contact the school, that information is on the postcard. There's an email address on there and there's a phone number. To need more than two ballots, please contact the school and the ballots will be sent out to the general public on, on May twenty seventh. So there are going to be three mailings, the postcards, the applegram, which is the mandated budget issue. And then the absentee ballots, they're all absentee ballots. They're due by five o'clock on June ninth. They will be counted here and that will also be live streamed and recorded as well. And we have elections especially, we're going to be approving here tonight. But the actual counting of the ballots will be done on live stream as well on June ninth after five o'clock. I want to make sure that the board understands that this is a very, this is a very different year to have, obviously in terms of the budget vote. Normally the vote would have been tomorrow, but everything has been pushed up. So that's how the voting process will work this year. Are there, are there any questions from our board members on the, what had you said?
How much is this costing versus normal way?
Quite a bit. We're asking for five thousand. We did make a deal with the post office. One of the pieces that we're, we're gonna send these out pre-stamped. We will, we will only be charged for the absentee ballot if they are, if they are returned. So if we have, if we have voters that are not returning the absentee ballot, we will be charged if they are returned. And then of course we're mailing out, we always mail out the applegram anyway. The new pieces to us, the postcard here and the absentee ballot and the two envelopes. So we're paying postage three times, the exact cost, it's in the thousands. This was an unexpected expense that we had no say over. So we are trying to minimize costs, we're running, running all those these, so, so get the aid back on that. But we do have to, we don't get the aid on the postage, of course, but we do the aid on printing and we're printing the ballots here in the house. We also plan on inviting, we have five board candidates, we plan on having them here or via this system on June ninth so they can make their statement, June second, sorry, June second, so they can make their statement to the general public, which is always part of the budget hearing for our five candidates. We have one incumbent and four challengers.
Will there be an opportunity for the public to send in emails or call in questions?
Yes, there will. We're gonna make that available through our district clerk's email address. They can send in questions. We are, you know, we are considering possibly using our texting line. We have the texting line through Let's Talk. We're gonna see that's a possibility as well, but certainly people can send in their questions ahead of time. And we'll make sure that our candidates see them at the hearing. And so yes, the answer to the questions, yes, and that will be shared on the website as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
One thing I'd like to just request, and we've talked about this previously in a number of meetings. Can we please have Mr. Zilif look into the, if any other school districts are interested in the modified aid program for sports across the board? Cause we're not the only school having this budget dilemma. And if, with a number of sports, if we can switch from three teams to two teams because we have pretty low enrollment anyway, we could use that as part of our savings. We've talked about it for over a year, probably a year and a half, almost two years now. But if we could look into a modified aid program in the sports where we have a lot of three, where we have teams at three different levels, that could also help with some of our budget issues. Not a much, but any little bit helps at this point.
Thank you. Yes, we can do that.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. I will move on to superintendent's report.
I have a number of items to update the board on. First of all, our meal service continues to go very well. We serve about four hundred meals a day, sometimes more, sometimes less. I want to thank Michelle Higgins and her personal touch staff. They've been here every day. We serve two meals the day before Good Friday. So we plan on continuing meal service through Friday, June nineteenth. So I want to thank Michelle Higgins and her staff. They've been outstanding. We've had several of our employees here as well assisting with the meal service. I've done it a number of times myself and it is busy, but we serve about four hundred meals a day. We're going to be doing that through about Friday, June nineteenth. The last day of remote learning, the last day of school, if you will, will be Friday, June twelfth. That has met our expectations as far as the state goes because we did have instruction continue over the Easter break. The last teacher work day will be targeting Thursday, June eighteenth. Beginning June first, we are returning twelve months staff back to the campus with all, that would be the administrative team, some are cleaning staff and our clerical staff. Face masks will be, will be offered and of course we will follow social distancing expectations as well. So I expect to have the twelve months staff back on campus, June first. They have been working hard from home, probably more hours than we do here because we're always on at home. So I remember staff that have been working at home, they've been given Chromebooks. So the staff has been working very diligently at home, but we're gonna get them back to campus on June first. Graduation plans, we are getting those close to be, to being finalized. I've done a number of meetings with student officers, at least two or three. I met with the parent advisory panel. We have surveyed our seniors. I spoke with the health commissioner last week regarding what we can and cannot do. A letter is drafted and that will be sent out to the senior parents and the students probably sometime next week. So we have some, we have some issues to take care of there. It's been a tough process to, you know, go through this. We, we love our graduation here at our school. And unfortunately it's going to look and sound different from what we're used to, what we like. But I want to thank our graduation staff, Dr. Slack, Mr. Kingsbury, Mr. Dragula. And, and I have also been part of that as well. And our four student officers have been very instrumental in making this happen. So thank you to, to them. I want to recognize and thank the line- I want to recognize and thank the Lions Club. I want to recognize and thank Sports Boosters, the Lyndenville Area Foundation and Student Council. We partnered and purchased senior signs for our seniors that I, that myself and my, our staff and parents had the honor to share with our students at the end of last month. We have more festivities planned for our seniors. Our athletic department is also working on a virtual award ceremony as well. And Mr. Kingsbury and Dr. Slack are working on a virtual class event as well. We plan on doing that in June. I want to thank the administrative team for their work on the, on the budget. I gave them some orders last week to find more cuts. They found more cuts and we will continue to follow through on those. I want to thank the White Birch and the Oak Orchard Assembly of God. We have partnered with them. We have two vans out there right now for our public to use equipped with mobile hotspots. All of the information is found on the website, on Facebook, so I would encourage our parents and family to use those hotspots at the north and south end of the district. We, of course, have our Wi-Fi spot here that we've been using since the start. Also, we, if you've been noticing on Facebook, we've had extensive senior profiles from the class of two thousand twenty. It's one of those things I think we can probably keep doing once this crisis is over. We have profiled each of our seniors on Facebook, which will receive a lot of positive comments and a lot of likes. Tomorrow, we are going to be doing a walkthrough of the Capitol project, myself, Steve Van Helscher, Joe, and the construction team will be doing a walkthrough. We are nearing the end of that project. Plans have also been made to hand out our school yearbook. I have it right here, you'll see it. Dr. Slack and the yearbook advisors are working on to plan to have that out to our students in mid-June. And the last item for the board business item, we do need to have a special board meeting by the end of the month or in very early June to go through the process of appointing our new director of facilities. That hiring process is almost done. Harold was part of that team as well as staff here. So the district clerk has sent out information regarding a possible, the need for a special board meeting to have this wrapped up. It has to be done by June fourth. It's a civil service expectation. If it's not done by June fourth, process starts all over again. And that's my report. I just want to thank again our staff and teachers, they've been outstanding in meeting the needs of our students. And we, as Vern said, we look forward to welcoming them back. I'm going to be participating in a webinar along with the rest of the staff, the administrative staff, on what school could look like in the fall. Our law firm, Harris Beach, is sponsoring that. So there has been dialogue of what school, you know, could possibly look like. There has been some conversation, it was on, it was on a budget presentation, do we bring the expanded prepay program over here to the main campus? And we shut down, if you will, the, the school across the street. That's a possibility. I'm not willing to make a recommendation on that yet. I'm afraid, or I'm concerned that we may need to have that school across the street for extra space. We're going to wait and see what the expectations are. Phase four, if you follow the state guidelines, schools are on phase four. We expect social distancing to continue all summer long. I've been, I've been watching all the news updates and as I'm sure many of you have. So plans are underway. We've begun to brainstorm here and, like I said, we're going to be watching that webinar this week on what school could look like come fall. We have concerns with sports, we have concerns with athletics, extracurriculars, all those things are up in the air. So, but I do want to thank our staff, thank our parents. And again, if you have any suggestions, please send me an email, send me a text at our text line or give us a call. We're happy to serve, we want to serve. And I want to again thank our parents, staff and teachers and, of course, and to our students. We really do miss you. I was at the Easy Shop last week, I saw Evan Horn, he served me some pizza and it was so nice to see our students out and about. So we miss what we don't have and we miss the sounds of the feet in the hallway, the chitter chatter, the sound of the baseball bat, the sound of a horn, the musical instruments and concerts and all those things. Very sad time, but I'm really proud of the school and how we have come and pulled together through, through this whole very unexpected crisis. So I thank you to the board as well for your support, guidance as we move forward with this. Thank you.
Questions of the superintendent? Hearing none, we will move on to business action items. Need a motion to, for reapproval of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget calendar as printed.
Motion to reapprove is printed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll poll the board. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
It's taking forever when I click the button to unmute. Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. Need a motion for approval of the annual legal notice as printed.
Motion to approve as printed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the board members. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. Need a motion for authorization to approve proposition number one, two thousand and twenty, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one Lyndenville Central School Budget in the amount of fourteen million, six hundred and ninety-eight, two hundred and seventeen dollars. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
You said proposition one?
Yes, proposition number one. Would you like me to read it?
Is that scenario number one or scenario number four?
That's now, Vern, that is secondly, this is the.
I'm getting a lot of feedback, I don't know if there's a lot of nitpots going on. Can you say that again, Jason?
Yes, I will, sorry. You are referring to respectfully, the property tax report card, we are, we are referring to the budget itself, which is letter C under business action, Vern. So it's, you know, resolve that just as Ted said, to approve the budget showing expenditures of fourteen million, six hundred and ninety-eight, two hundred and seventeen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the board members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. Need a motion to approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one property tax report card. With your motion, please make sure you identify which scenario you are putting forth. To be clear, this is the, the budget scenarios that we just previously went through. At the, the report card offers a scenario of a zero tap increase in the tax levy of one percent or a two percent increase in the tax levy. Need a motion to approve one of those.
Motion to approve scenario three, which is the two percent.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? And I believe, just to be ultra-clear, in the budget presentation, there was actually scenario number two.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion is approved. Need a motion to approve the musical therapy pathways creative arts P L L, P L L C is printed.
Motion to approve music therapy pathways is printed.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
I'm curious to know if our students are still receiving the services this year and if they're going to remain flexible because we don't know what next year's school year looks like and how they're going to make sure our students who are receiving these services continue to receive them.
Yes, we have students who are receiving those services. Those are run through our C S E office. Those are looked at both from a program side of, program side of topics in terms of what the students need and then also a cost as well. So the answer is yes, they have continued and they, and they will continue as needed.
And, okay, and because there's contract language here, so I just want to make sure that there's some flexibility and how those services are, are delivered because, like I said, we just, we don't know what school year looks like next year.
Right, we are only, as we use a service, because then we are built for them.
Okay.
Can you explain more about this? What is this?
Music therapy. It's used for our students who have autism, who have some, some learning, some learning disabilities. We contract with the actual, our provider is Ruby Hoffy, and we have students, we have actually, you know, reduced some of our students that have it. It is proven to work this with students, with students who have autism to help, help them with their disabilities.
Any other questions or comments?
I just would like to say, I know it's, it's a great program. I have a family member who gets it and Ruby does a phenomenal job.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the board for their votes. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and that's unanimous. Need a motion to approve the budget transfer over ten thousand dollars is, excuse me, as printed.
Motion to approve as printed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Or Joe, do you want to explain this any further?
Just want to know, our insurance company is going to be reimbursing us for most of this money. We needed to spend it first and then show them that it's been completed and then a good majority of this money comes back. This is what the insurance company was withholding relative to our wind damage.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Does that money come out of fund balance originally, then go back in?
No.
No.
It comes out of the maintenance code. So the, a budget code you have there, it comes in one code and out the other, so it's not coming out of fund balance.
Okay. I'm just wondering if these are the type of emergencies that you need things for?
Yes, but, but, but in this case, we had the money, we just, we had the money around.
We're good.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the members for their votes. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. Need a motion to approve the two thousand twenty school budget elections inspectors as printed.
A motion to approve. I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Is there anyone else? It seems like there's the same or less people than when we use the machine. Is there other staff like Lori or someone else that's going to be organizing this or?
Yes. So we'll try to, yeah. Lori just said, she actually said there's actually more people than what we usually have. I think Sue asked that question, Sue.
Oh, okay, it seems like there's usually at least four people normally. Okay. Thank you and good luck to count all these ballots.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, one question, they have to be postcard sent back? They actually have to be, if somebody didn't get it in and brought it up to the school to drop it off that day or beforehand, is that acceptable?
By five P M. Yep, it doesn't have to be sent to the mail, they have that option. Honestly, we would, we would as much as possible prefer you walk it in or save it on the posters cost, but yes, it can be hand-delivered by five P M on Tuesday, June ninth. It does not have to be sent in.
Okay, thank you. Can one person bring in three people's votes?
As long as the ballots are signed, there's a signature line on the envelope, Harold, the ballots have to be signed and sealed, but yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
My vote is yes as well, that's unanimous. Onto business information items. As we go through these, if you have any questions, please speak up and we will get you an answer. Treasures Report, March two thousand twenty. Student Activities Balance and Reconciliation Sheet, March two thousand twenty. Federal Fund Schedule of Claims Number Fourteen. Federal Fund Schedule of Claims Numbers Four, Five and Six. School Lunch Fund Schedule of Claims Number Four. Scholarship Fund Schedule of Claims Number Four. The summary of quarterly reports for the period July first, two thousand nineteen through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty. First Read of Board Policy Fifty-Six Eighty-One, School Safety Plans. First Read of Board Policy Sixty-Two Fourteen, Probation and Tenure. First Read of Board Policy Seventy-Two Forty, Student Records, Access and Challenge. First Read of Board Policy Seventy-Five Eleven, Immunization of Students. Board Regulation Number Seventy-Two Forty-R, Access to Student, Student Records. First Read of Board Regulation Seventy-Five Eleven-R, Immunization Guidelines. Hearing no questions or comments, we'll move to personnel certify.
Yeah, we have a letter of intent to retire from Mrs. Lisa Lewis. We have that ready for you to be accepted.
Need a motion to accept the.
I make the motion to accept the letter of intent from our teacher, Lisa Lewis, with much thanks.
I second that and the sentiment.
Any questions or comments?
I'd also like to thank Mrs. Lewis. She's been doing a phenomenal job with the homeschooling.
Just to be clear, this is not making you going to retire, I mean, this is just setting up. So this could be rescinded.
Any other questions or comments?
But I thank Lisa as well, of course, but it's not the first notice.
Okay, I'll poll members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, that's unanimous.
I have a recommendation to abolish two civil service positions. We can take these one at a time. The first one, letter A, is for a keyboard specialist. The one, letter B, is for a teacher. As I said, these are both for two retirements and we hope to honor them here next month if we're able to. And we hope to honor them here next month if we're able to. Um, but these are, um, cost-saving measures. These will be backfilled internally, but we need to have this on record. So recommendation that, uh, letter A, the keyboard specialist position be abolished.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. The part under whereas, uh, as a result of COVID-19, these positions were being considered to be abolished before, when we had a budget deficit?
They were not. They were not being considered.
Steve, we're going to be backfilled?
They were not, no. With the plan was, uh, to hire them when the, when the funds were stronger. So they, they're going to be, if this is approved, they're going to be backfilled now. This is a cost-saving measure. Um, uh, between these two positions, it's just under about $100,000 with benefits. Um, and, um, bike and all that stuff. So, uh, they're not going to be filled now due primarily, Vern, to the, uh, financial crisis.
Okay, I thought these were going to be some of the things that are going to help with our budget prior to COVID-19. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll poll the board members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That's unanimous.
I will back up just one second to, um, Vern's comment. I had a second to gather my thoughts. We had talked about that. Okay, he is absolutely right. What pulled the trigger for us, so to speak, was the pandemic crisis. So, uh, you are right. We had talked about it. What made the decision final was the financial crisis. The letter B is the same thing, uh, the same, um, resolution to abolish a teacher A position.
Motion to approve as before, letter B.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll poll the board members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. It's unanimous.
Last item, I recommend, um, that Dave Balster, who has retired officially, that we retain him at the rate explained there as needed, um, while we transition to his, um, soon-to-be replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I was part of the, uh, interview committee and the guy that we seem to have lined up seems to be very good. Seems to be very, uh, um, Linden-Vilish, I would call it. He's, uh, dedicated. He's a volunteer in a fire company. And, uh, this, this guy seems like he's all in. He's the type of guy who's going to be like, uh, Dave Dix was back in the day and, uh, Bob Bow and also, uh, uh, Dave Balster. He's one of those people that are community-oriented.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll poll members for their votes. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That's unanimous. Program Action. Need a motion to approve the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and Preschool, Special Education as printed.
Motion to approve the recommendations as printed.
I'll second.
Uh, we have, uh, second from Steve. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll poll the members for their vote. Sue?
Yes.
Can you repeat that, Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve? Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That's unanimous. Uh, Program Information, Non-Resident Student Letters? So those are just information items? Any questions or comments?
See our staff members who are going to do, once again, send other students to our school in the fall. Hopefully, we'll be in school in the fall.
I just, this is, uh, a good thing that we've done. We've changed this, what, maybe three years ago, four years ago?
Mm-hmm.
And what this does is allows teachers who don't live in the district, and both of these live fairly close to the district, I believe, but, uh, the ability to bring their children here and as a rule, not always, but teachers' kids are usually pretty astuteous and they, they bring a lot to the community. And it also besties teachers in our community. And I think that when we did this three, four years ago, it righted a wrong that was done maybe 10 years before that and, uh, for the wrong reason. And I think this is, is good and it, and it should stay this way as long as it, it works out.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to roundtable before we have an executive session. And this will go in the same order we've been voting. Sue?
I've got nothing.
Harold?
I'd just like to say that, um, the last two days, our COVID cases have only been one. We had none yesterday and one today. So hopefully Orleans County is going to get on a track of no cases and a streak of them and the safety of all of, uh, all of our taxpayers and children and people in the community hopefully, uh, will just get better and school will hopefully be able to start on time. And pray every night that you can that, uh, they come up with a vaccine that'll eliminate this tragedy that we're all living through. And, um, that's about it. Oh, just another thing. Anybody on the board, I would recommend that you watch, if you haven't seen it already, the documentary, uh, Planet of the Humans. It is very eye-opening.
What's that called? I'm not watching myself.
All right, thank you. Kelly?
I'm just going to say that I know my children got a new round of, uh, remote learning today and, uh, the teachers have been fantastic. There's a rhythm and, um, with my four at home, it's, it's going, it's going really well considering the circumstances. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Kelly. Vern?
Thanks to all the hard work from the teachers that have been helping us with all the homeschooling through this. We really appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you. Steve?
Same thing. Um, I have a first grader and a fourth grader and, um, the fourth grade team has been diligent and, and the first grade team has been outstanding. And my daughter, their first, uh, Google Hangout or a couple, maybe you might not have her first. First time I was home for in a while, but, um, it's been pretty cool to see and, uh, she enjoys that and looks forward to it weekly. So thank you to the teachers for all their work.
Thank you. Kristen?
Um, I'd like to extend my thanks to the high school level teachers for staying on top of kids who, it's really difficult to motivate a 15-year-old child to do homework remotely, but, um, they are doing a great job reaching out to them, whether it be through Zoom, Zoom meetings or, um, I know Mason's been getting, um, some messages directly from some of his teachers which have really sort of inspired him to keep moving and keep motivated and to make sure that his work is done on time. And I really do appreciate that because it, it takes the pressure off of some of us parents who are not great teachers and can't keep children motivated. So they're doing a phenomenal job and I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We are in need of an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Motion to move to executive session for the reason to discuss personnel matters.
I'll second.
Poll the members for their votes. Sue?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Steve? Kristen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we will be shutting down the live stream while we're in executive session. Um, there is no scheduled action to be taken, but we will come back on live stream to adjourn the regular meeting.